Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for the town of Middleborough. Please join me. Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm not sitting here by design. It wasn't my design, anyway. As the senior selectman in a reorganization meeting, I have to do the protocols for election of officers. I would like to welcome our two newest selectmen, Malani Delp, John Nolton. Welcome to the board. Congratulations on your victory. I would like to thank Mr. Rulo, who snuck in and back to see how we were doing, I guess. He's gonna harass me, so I'll need... Chief, can you have somebody ready to take him out if we have to?
[Laughter]
We'll have none on that this night.
[Inaudible]
All right. As part of the process, I'm gonna ask the two new selectmen if you've both been sworn in by the clerk.
Yes.
John Nolton?
I have.
Okay. Good. And now, at this point, I will ask for nominations for the position of chairperson.
Mr. McKinnon?
Mr. Frawley.
I'd like to nominate you for the position of chairman of the Board of Selectmen in Middleborough.
I second the motion of Stephen Kin, chairman of the Board of Selectmen in Middleborough.
We have a motion and a second. I have to ask for this for three times. Are there any other nominations for chairman of the Board of Selectmen? Are there any other nominations for chairman of the Board of Selectmen? Okay. Having no other nominations, I'll take a vote now. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay. The ayes have it. New world, huh?
[Laughter]
At this time, I would like to entertain a motion for a vice chair position.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to motion to nominate Alan Frawley as vice chair.
Second.
And we have a second. Motion and a second. I'd like to entertain any other motions for a vice chair? Hearing none. I would like to entertain any other motions for our vice chair? Hearing none. All those in favor of Mr. Frawley joining the fray? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'm gonna pause for one moment while we...
Try to break Jane's camera.
Break... There'll be no trying.
The three of you could just sit closer together and then the only thing standing out.
Is this my good side, Jane?
Yeah. As good as it gets.
Hell of a year it's gonna be, isn't it?
All right. Oh, we should have the challenge or...
Yes, you should. Yes. Take the board. We'll have to waste two shots.
Okay. You ready?
Are you ready?
I'm ready. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Under unanticipated, do any of the board members have anything under unanticipated? Or under announcements and recognition? How about the audience? Does the audience have anything under unanticipated? Could you please spell your name and surname?
Yes. I'm Lamont Kurt Marion, and I'd like to congratulate John Nolton and Malani Delp on a great campaign and thought they were best, glad that they were elected, is what I wanna say. And, Miss Delp, you look very attractive tonight.
Lucky man, that husband of yours.
The Republican's a lucky man.
He doesn't know how lucky...
That's gonna work, huh?
He says that to all the new members.
He said that to me last year.
[Laughter]
Okay. Anything else? This is gonna be a tough year. Anything else under... Anybody else have anything under unanticipated? How about under announcements? Mr. Frawley, I think you have.
I have a couple announcements. All right. On Saturday, May 18th, the annual Middleborough Park Department canoe race will start at Old Bridge Street in Lakeville at 11:00 a.m. Costs $20 per boat for free registration. It's $30 on the day of the race, and this will be followed by the annual Oliver Mill Duck Race. And ducks are available for $5 each at the... At Oliver Mill at the day of the race. Please contact the Middleborough Park Department, 508-946-2440. At the website, if you go to the Park Department website, you can download the registration form and mail it in, and you can view the flyer they have there as well. Okay. On May 13th, at the Council on Aging in Middleborough, they're having a forum called Money Matters. It's a financial checkup that's sponsored by Pro Home and the Middleborough Area Assistance Coalition, and it's a workshop to learn about budgeting, spending, setting goals, and saving. That's May 13th, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Childcare will be provided by the YMCA providers. Registration is required. Transportation can be provided if required, and registration for the workshop, childcare, and transportation is appreciated. You can give the COA a call at 508-946-2490. The deadline to sign up for all those things is May 8th. I would highly recommend, if you have even any questions whatsoever about your household finances, that you attend this workshop. It's two hours. It's for free. They provide transportation. They provide babysitting. It's a great, great deal. This is by Pro Homes, which their business is helping first-time homeowners get into their first homes. So if you're in that category, I highly recommend that. I'll be here, but I'm gonna try to send my wife to it, see if it works. I have another announcement about the Nemasket River cleanup, which is being sponsored by Badger Wilderness Guides. It's for communities in Middleborough, Lakeville, and other towns in and around the Nemasket River watershed. I believe I have the first t-shirt, 'cause I heart the Nemasket River. These are being sold online to raise funds for this... To help fund this cleanup. Days one through six, we have... The first day will be Saturday, June 15th. The second day will be Tuesday, June 18th. The third is June 29th, Saturday. Day four is Sunday, June 30th. Day five is Saturday, July 13th, and the last day is day six, Tuesday, July 16th. There is a volunteer appreciation barbecue on Saturday, July 20th. Please hire as VP no later than two weeks in advance if you're in need of a canoe, or a kayak, or a lifejacket, or a paddle, or any of those things. All those things can be provided if you sign up. Mr. Badger is just asking for two weeks' notice. Mr. Badger can be contacted at Badger Wilderness Guides, postbox 147 in North Carver, Mass., 02355, and he can be contacted at dan@badgerbasecamp.com or at 781-589-4403. And I'm gonna see what I can do about getting this up on the Middleborough website. And, lastly, for announcements, anyway, the Middleborough Public Library is gonna host a live video from Lincoln Center featuring author Dan Brown in "An Evening of Codes, Symbols, and Secrets" on Wednesday, May 15th, 7:30 to 8:30 p.m. A drawing will be held for a copy of the book, his newest book, Inferno, not by Dante, by Dan Brown. And the winner may choose either print or ebook version of the book, and you must be present to win. No registration is required for this event. The library normally closes at 8:00 p.m., but while it will close at 8:00 p.m. for those not attending the event, it's gonna stay open for the live video feed past date. Dan Brown wrote the Angels and Demons, The Da Vinci Code, things like that. He's a pretty well-known, bestselling author, if you like either 13th-century Italian literature, which is Dante's Inferno, which is his books based on. It's probably not the big draw, but the other stuff is pretty popular, conspiracy theories and all sorts of politics and religious and all sorts of neat stuff. But it's the only time you're really gonna get a chance to see this author talk about this live, and I'm ecstatic that our library is participating in this program. That's it for me.
That's it?
Well, there's still herring in the herring run if you wanna go down and take a look at it. That's it.
That's it?
That's it.
You sure?
Yeah, for now.
Anybody else have any announcements?
Well, Lizzy, GNE Commissioner has asked if we announce this.
Not yet.
Not yet.
He wants to be here for this.
Okay.
So we've gotta... We're gonna hold off on that.
Okay.
Anybody else? Any announcements from the audience? Oh, a new face.
Congratulations on the new elected members. Thank you, Chairman Ryan Frye. I want to thank the people who came on Saturday, the Middleborough Friends Pancake Breakfast with the COA. Share over 200 individuals, of course, 375 meals, it was all you could eat. People made multiple trips. It was great. It's a great over $1,000 for the COA. All those proceeds go to the COA, that activity's fun and help fund those pieces that, of course, it would be a special time to have today, but it's been always fun. So we're happy you'll survive with that, and I want to thank everyone for coming along to share all the basics here in this room that were there on that day.
Thank you, sir. That was a very good time. That was a very good event, and hopefully you generated a lot of income for that. It was a good... Very worthwhile event. Okay. Before I jump into the minutes, I just wanna touch on a couple of things with our two new selectmen. You've been given a lot of information. I believe you both met with Charlie already. You both have received selectmen's handbooks, or copies of the selectmen's handbook. You both have received the guidelines and procedures for the Board of Selectmen. One of the things that... I sent links for both of you for the Incident Command System. I sent it to you, to your email tonight.
Okay.
Recently. It's something you'll have to take for the Board of Health. It doesn't mean you're gonna be able to take over fireground activities or any kind of an emergency, but it gives you the structure of the hows and whys of the way things happen in emergency planning. Those courses are free. Takes about a couple of hours. It's all interactive on the computer. Jackie, will you be notifying Mass Municipal Association of the election of the two new officers?
Okay.
So once that's done, you'll sign up on the Mass Municipal Association, and from there, once you get signed up in there, then you can sign up with the State House News, and you can get information that's going on, bills and so forth, that are going through the State House, so you can kinda keep track of it, depending on how, you know... You got a lot to learn in the first year, but, you know, you'll always be looking for more information on stuff. You've gone over the WRPD materials, sort of?
With John, not yet. With Malani, but yeah, we will next week. Actually, this week, we're gonna be meeting again.
This week. All right. Whenever we do have a WRPD hearing, we have to have four members present. We can't... We could hold a hearing, we can't do anything, so there's no sense of holding a hearing if we don't have four members present at all. That's the bylaw. So on those particular nights, we try to make sure everybody's... You know, we always try to be here, but try not to miss those nights. They're very important. Okay. Anything else, Alan?
If you need any help, call Steve.
And as a chair, I judge him here to the vice chair, so call Alan. Ben, did I miss anything?
He's not.
No?
Call Steve.
Again, call Alan. Feel free to call me anytime. My phone's always on. I won't answer it, but it's always on. Okay. Then we'll go right into minutes. The acceptance of minutes. This will be the regular scheduled minutes for 5/6... I'm sorry, for April 22nd, 2013. I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve. Any comments? Questions? Corrections?
Question.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Can... Will Malani and I vote on these?
No. You'll just abstain for these two.
Okay.
Because you weren't partaking in. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And two abstentions. Executive session minutes for April 22nd?
29.
You have the right date? Yep. April 22.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? Questions? Corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Minutes are done. Okay. The board with... Chairman would entertain a motion to have the chair or his designee sign the warrants for the weekend in 5/3?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Let me just clarify that for the new board members. Every week, we have to sign the warrants for the payroll, for expenditures. We review them and sign them. The auditors have said that before, the chairman would just go ahead and sign them, but the auditors wanted to have a majority signed, but they agreed to the chairman or his designee, but we do have to make that motion every week. Normally, Al, last year, would sign, and whenever he was tied up, I would get out and sign because I have time to be around the town. So if, for some reason, I get tied up, I would call one of you to be able to go in and sign that, but we have to do this every week. Okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. SERPAD. We presently have myself as the SERPAD Commissioner, and Ruth Joffroy is the Planning Board Representative to SERPAD. Every year, we have to vote for a SERPAD Representative. We have the letter. This job entails going to the SERPAD meeting. It's once a month. It's over in Taunton, usually. You're discussing all of the money that's being used and where it's being used for transportation projects.
What time is the meeting?
Usually 7:00 o'clock at night. Now, what I've been doing for the past few years with it is trying to protect the town because the state will oftentimes use SERPAD to get programs through that might be detrimental to us. There'll be more controls put on us. So I, as you can well imagine, fight that. And usually, I win these little battles, but it's one of these situations where quite often, they will walk up and say, "Here you go. We'd like you to sign this tonight." And I'm not one that likes to just sign things. I like to read what they put in here because a lot of times, what they have in there is not good for our town. Some of it's good, a lot of it isn't. So you have to be the voice for the town. So I would entertain a motion to have a candidate to go to SERPAD to fill that position.
You're not interested in doing it anymore?
Gee, no. I would like to pass that up. Is there anybody interested in doing it, though?
Once a month, 7:00 p.m.?
Yep.
I'll do it.
You gonna return?
Once a month. I'm not... I'm getting off of at least one committee that I'm on already, so I'll be swapping...
I would entertain a motion to have Mr. Frawley be our SERPAD Representative?
Mr. Chair, I recommend Alan Frawley be our representative for SERPAD.
Second.
And we have a second. All those in favor of Mr. Frawley being the new SERPAD Representative?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. SERPAD.
Oh, thanks.
Let's see. The next... I should have an agenda. I'll be right next to him. Okay. Next, we'll have Capital Planning Committee. We need one selectman to be on the Capital Planning Committee.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I've been doing that for a couple of years. I actually attended the meetings before I became a selectman, and I'd love to continue on in that role.
Not gonna be too much of a strain, is it?
Nope. That's an extremely important committee, and I really enjoy my role on it.
All right. Mr. Frawley has graciously... Would like to serve again on the Capital Planning Committee. Can I have a motion, putting Mr. Frawley in that position?
Motion to appoint Alan Frawley as Representative to Capital Planning Committee from the Board of Selectmen.
Second. And we have a second. Motion and a second. Any comments? Any questions? Concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Police Station Building Committee. We need to have one selectman for that.
Mr. Chairman, I have been attending these meetings, and, given my building background, I would like to be the Representative to the Police Building Committee.
Okay. Anybody else interested? Okay. May I have a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Quell.
I'd like to nominate Malani Delp as Representative for the Board of Selectmen for the Police Station Building Committee.
We have a second?
Second.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. You're in. Citizens Environmental Health Impact Committee. We need one selectman to serve on that board.
And just as an observation, you also have a member representing the Board of Health to that committee as well, so basically, two people...
We need two people on it.
From our board.
Mr. Chair, Ben and I have been doing that role for the past year, and I guess through you to Charlie. Is there a need for two members of the Board of Selectmen to be on that? I don't really see the need.
Other than, I think it was set up by bylaw. Was that right, Mr. Moderator?
It was set up at town meetings, where the moderator appoints the committee with the exception of one member of the Health Board.
Board of Health.
And one member of the Selectmen.
So the answer is...
Is it bylaw that requires two members of the Board of Selectmen to be on that committee?
Well, it's a town meeting vote.
Well, one is the Board of Health and the other is the Selectmen, and you folks are one of the same, so...
Could we appoint, again, through you, Mr. Chair, to either Charlie or to Mr. Perkins? Could one person serve both roles?
That's not the way the vote works. It should be one or two individuals.
All right.
Okay. We need two individuals to serve because we are the Board of Health and we are the Selectmen. So, just clear that up. Mr. Quell, are you interested in staying on that committee for another year?
Well, Alan's gone ahead and volunteered for stuff that's gonna keep him busy enough, so I'll go ahead and throw my hat in there. We just need somebody else.
We need another candidate?
Mr. Chairman, what exactly does it entail? Just so that...
Five nights a week. You have to buy dinner.
Glenn, memorize the pizza number, okay?
I will defer to Mr. Frawley for this.
It's basically once a month, and it's... They address health concerns in and around town. They're very involved with the Rockin Industry Site, and they're looking into the... Actually, I think I'm gonna be taping a PSA for them for blue-green algae on boats. So it's environmental health issues that are in and around town, potential environmental health issues. It's not exciting, but it is important.
But it only meets once a month?
Yes.
Once a month, yeah.
If that, sometimes. Not even that.
When are the meetings?
Generally, Tuesdays.
Tuesday nights, usual. Tuesday nights.
7:00, 7:30.
But that can be changed. That's just something we... That's just the vote we took. You know, if it doesn't work for a number of people, it can be changed.
Do we have a candidate that would like to jump in on this?
Gotta bring the energy down here. Not... I'm willing... Tuesday night is not gonna be ideal for me, but I'm willing to be there. Okay.
Good. Mr. Nolton?
Second.
Eager?
Just get the ball rolling.
Any comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Done. You're in. All right.
Excuse me? Excuse me. Can you just clarify who's representing which board?
Oh, that's John and myself.
Yeah, but one is Board of Health and one is Board of Health.
Yeah, sure. He'll be...
Mr. Quell will be Board of Health, and Mr. Nolton will be Board of Selectmen. MBTA Advisory Board. I will do that because it... I mean, I would fall for that.
So moved.
Is that it?
Do we have a second?
Second.
You guys gotta be quick on these.
Somebody says something stupid, like, I'll do that, get to it right now, okay? Don't waste time. Any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Plymouth County Advisory Board, this board meets
Regularly.
Irregular, yeah, that's anywhere up to three or four times a year.
I'll volunteer for that.
Will you? Mr. Quell volunteers for that. We have a-
I'll second that.
Second, we got a second for Mr. Quell. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. You're in. We've done SERPAD, let's see, the Selectman Delegate to JP, JTPG. The Selectman Delegate for the-
Charlie isn't?
Well, no, it's the Selectman Delegate.
No, this is the appointment of the Board of Selectmen.
Nope.
Of you.
Right.
Okay.
You appoint. See, SERPAD has to be one of you, and you can't delegate that, but this one is a-
But the JTPG, which meets mostly during the daytime.
Right, exactly.
What does, what does JT PG stand for?
The Joint Transportation Planning Committee makes recommendations to the MPO, the Decision Making Body, which is acted on by the SERPAD Board. Or is that a separate? Is the MPO, they're pretty much one and the same.
They're really one and the same, they're a piece of the SERPAD Board.
Yeah.
One of the SERPAD members runs from this district. There's a little political campaign you put on, it takes about ten seconds, because it's, I wanna run because I think I'd be a great guy, and then they vote you into the MPO, and then you make decisions that are based on what everybody else has already told you. It's a dog and pony show.
Yeah, the, yeah, so, so the, the Transportation Improvement Plan starts with the JTPG making recommendations to the MPO, which ultimately decides on what the Transportation Improvement Program is going to be. And currently, right now, we're working on the plan that takes us out to, to 2017. It's out to public hearing, and, you know, there, there are some amendments being made to it.
So I would recommend we put Charlie in that role, because he has the time and he's got the background with it now.
So moved.
Second, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, okay. All those for Charlie to be the delegate to the JTPG?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. The alternate to the JTPG, that's Ruth.
That's Ben Ruth, yes.
It will be in a minute.
Okay, I would, I would entertain a motion for an alternate. Do you have any ideas who you'd like to make that?
Thank Ruth.
Ruth Fra, Ruth Joffrey.
Second.
Okay, we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Done.
We, we are done now.
We've already done the Board of Health, okay. Done with the new business. Now we'll go to hearings, meetings, and licenses. I have been neglectful, I did not report that this particular meeting is being broadcast on McCam and recorded on McCam and broadcast on Verizon. Forgive me, I'll try to remember that in the future. We have an annual report from McCam. Is our first?
Good evening.
Good evening, Chief.
I'm basically part of the license agreement that we have with Comcast and Verizon, sort of bring to you what we've done in the past year, how we've spent the money that they give back to the town, and that's what this report does. Rather than me stand up here and read it, is there any question from any of us watching on any of the items that would be?
Yes?
How you doing, Simon Quell?
Good.
Good to see you. So you guys are, really took this and ran with it, you're broadcasting meetings over Lakeville, and you're doing Freetown as well, huh?
Well, we stopped in Lakeville because once we took the channel over, they preempted, they took it off. They're doing it, but we're in negotiations with Comcast to put that on the back edge of Edgeway Park, and we're gonna split the cost with them, rather, because they're, under the license, they are providing cable to the park, to our middle of all residents, but they're not providing our PEG access. So we're gonna split the costs around six thousand dollars, our costs, to them, and the committee's already approved it, and I'm just trying to get it done before you can, we've been doing this back and forth for a while now, and we finally got some solution to it. Now we just have to get the park owners, for whatever it is, to allow it. And it only, it's only a road cut, and then there's a right away down the back of the property that they northed, you know, and they'll put it in, tie everybody in from the middle of all side, and one less headache for the Selectmen.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
So, through you, Charlie, we're talking about, at this point, Mr. Burke? Would authorize that?
Indeed.
Okay, he's aware of this, is coming to him, and, okay.
Do you wanna tell us a little bit about Freetown?
I'm Karen, I'm true. Hi.
Hi Karen, how are you?
Welcome, my name is John. Freetown, we're on, in Freetown, hundred percent, on Channel Nine, it's Channel ninety-five in Freetown, and basically, they have somebody cover their Freetown Selectmen's Meetings, and then I re-take their footage and air it for them three times a week, just like the rest of the meetings we do here in town, and they see all of our other programming that we do, we just slide their meetings in, they, they had a candidate's form, they gave me a DVD to play, and I played that for them, but that's about it. They're, they're happy, they seem happy, they're, they're getting their education channel now from Lakeville, so they share the, the Ponet, that was a-
Ponet?
Yeah, Ponet, schools. So they, they, they're getting a school channel for the Lakeville and Freetown.
Beautiful.
Did anyone have any other questions?
How many hours a week of recordings are you doing for the different committees and so forth? Do you know?
Well, we have a great program that I went in today and did, from March 2012 to 2013, we broadcast over five, over five hundred shows. Hundred and sixty-two of those were municipal meetings, with an average length of an hour and thirty-three minutes, and of those five hundred shows, there were five thousand three hundred and forty-eight runs of all those shows. It's not just, and we try to keep that bulletin board running too, it's a lot of important information we want people to see, and now I'm even uploading, until we get our video on demand, which is up next step, up and running, I've been uploading the Selectmen's Meetings to YouTube, and posting them on Facebook, so if anyone goes to McCam on Facebook, they can see the Selectmen's Meetings, there are links to them, and any other new shows that we have going on, we have, Welcome to Middleboro Historic Cemeteries, which is a new show by the Friends of the Cemeteries, and it's an interesting group.
Now, if somebody wanted to get something on your bulletin board, how would they go about that?
They can either email me at kboy@mmcam02346.com, they can drop the bulletin board public service announcement in the mailbox that's outside, it's a black mailbox at the ramp to the back of Town Hall, it says PEG Access Only. PEG is Public Education and Government, so I have gotten some town bills in there, and they're closing the right place. That's probably the best way is email.
Best way is to email you?
Yeah.
And then you can clarify.
Any, you know, maybe a couple weeks, just so we can get it on and running, it takes me a day or two to get everything up and on air. I am here every day, and I have twelve current volunteers that are active, covering all the meetings and events that happen in town, and they're doing a good job. And anyone else who wants to volunteer, we're always training and teaching new, new volunteers how to use all our equipment, so it's really, it's fun, so if anybody's interested, come to Town Hall, I'm in the lower levels, we call it, up the basement, come and visit if you want to.
No, Bob, I'm scared, oh, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, is this okay? Mr. Chairman, how often do those announcements run? And I know Charlie and the board has had some concern about the train starting, the service starting to the Cape, and are you going to be able to put announcements on there for people to be careful, to caution?
Yeah, I, anytime I get announcements from Charlie or Dappy or anybody, it goes on pretty much immediately, I can do it from home. I can even do a crawl across the bottom of the screen, it won't show during a program, but it'll crawl during the announcements when they cycle through.
Yeah, that would be-
Like I said, we've done a programming running twenty-four seven, like a lot of PEG Access Studios do, because I do want the bulletin boards to run, but you can also view any of the bulletin boards, if you just wanna see if I got theirs on yet, and don't wanna sit there and watch through, it takes probably about fifteen, twenty minutes to cycle through all the bulletin boards, you do have fifty to eighty of them on there. But you can go over the website, mccam02346.com, and put on bulletin boards, and you can see them all, just open your reason if you wanna notice them on.
Right, I was just concerned about the frequency, as, as much as we can get that out there, if there's a scroll across.
Yeah, I can have that scroll.
It's very important, people are aware of that.
But when we have it crossing, it closes itself middle of our, if you have a notice on, and have that come across the bottom of the screen as well.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else?
Also, with that Freetown broadcast that we're doing, the town gets five thousand dollars back to the general fund.
A week?
A year.
A year?
Bob, you have one opening on your committee right now?
Yes, we do have a person that volunteered doing filming, Paul Lazarovich, okay? Yeah, he wants to, he's been asking to join, we've never had any opening. The person that did just retire was, he was the original committee member, one of, we have one left, so that's nineteen eighty-two, he started and he just left. We really will miss him because he had a lot of knowledge, especially during negotiations. So Paul has a background that, you know, we'd like to tap if we could, I don't know if there's a possibility. I think Charlie has a letter from him up to the board, and you know, they appointing authority, but that's the committee's recommendation to fill that position with that person.
All right. Any other board member seven in? No? Bob, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Well, we have, Wayne Perkins is here to discuss Green School Committee. This is an official type hearing, that we have to wait till court of up?
Good evening.
Mr. Perkins, good evening.
How are we doing?
Fine, thank you.
I'd like to first start off by congratulating Lauren and John on their election, and just a brief comment, after having sat up there for nine years myself, I genuinely hope that you get as much enjoyment out of sitting there representing the folks of this town as I did, so have fun with it. What I'm here for tonight, a couple of months ago, we loosely re-instituted the Green School Committee with two specific objectives. One, to try to come up with a plan to complete it, and number two, to come up with a plan to utilize it, so we don't end up with another vacant building in town, going the way of some of the others they have in the past. We've met, I believe, three times now, we've made some significant progress on both issues, but the committee has asked me to come before you, because I think we're at the point where some legitimate decisions need to be made in reference to the direction that we're going. We're asking that you folks faithfully appoint us as a town committee, and on that committee would be some of us who are originals, Lincoln Andrews, Neil Rosenthal, Bruce Atwigs, Bruce Atwin, myself, and Diane Stewart, and then one member from the Board of Selectmen, who at this point in time is Alan Fraley, and one member from the School Committee, who at this time is Sarah Cedarholm. Here again, for the, the same purposes, what we're trying to accomplish, we're gonna have to come up with some legitimate recommendations and bring them back to you folks. So, we've been posting meetings because of the fact that some of us attending our elected officials, by having a legitimate town committee, that would make the posting even more secure so, that's the request.
Okay, what's the terms gonna, what are the terms of service gonna be on these postings?
Probably be a year, and run concurrent with, Charlie, what are the other committees that we've done?
Through thirty?
Hmm?
Through June thirtieth?
Through June thirtieth, so why don't we stay on that, rather than creating another one from this date to a year from now, and then on June thirtieth, when all the committees get reappointed, you can reappoint this one through?
No, no, I, I think we can appoint two next June thirtieth.
Okay, that works too.
Great. All of these people wanna serve for this term?
Yes.
Okay. So there's no, no problems with us creating this ad hoc committee?
No.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to create a committee, Green School Committee, Greens, what are you gonna name yourselves, Green School Utilization Committee or?
Why don't we just, it's been the, the Green School Preservation Committee in the past, why don't we keep it that?
Preservation?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any comments or questions, concerns, issues? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. You are a committee. Okay, now we have the Town Manager's Report.
Mr. Chairman, the first item in the report is a memo from Andy Baggis to me outlining the street work that he's got lined up to start this year. As you can see, we're expecting a million three in additional funds if the, all goes well at the legislature, which so far it has, so we, you know, we'll have about a million eight to spend going forward, so right now, we're looking at Plymouth Street, Cedar Street, Katrina Road, Bourne, Corden Elm, and Station Streets, and guardrail installation at Thomas, Plimpton, and East Main Street, and Everett Square Engineering and Design, and let me, let me touch briefly on that last one. As you know, we've been attempting to get a economic development grant for Everett Square and, and the Oak Street intersection for two years, and, and we've not been successful for two years in a row, so one of the, the criticisms of our application is that it was not fully designed, so this will address that, we will, this time, this fall, when we submit that application again, is we will have a fully designed project, so that will take away one of the criticisms of our application. The other thing that does for us, though, it gives us a parallel track to follow, because tip funding, this, this is a, a project that is tip eligible, I talked about the Transportation Improvement Plan earlier, and we might as well get it ready to go down both paths, so if we're not successful getting economic development money, we can get transportation improvement money, and you, in order to get started in the, in the tip world, you need to have a, a design completed and ready to go. The nice thing about pursuing tip funding also is, you know, occasionally, projects drop out at the last minute, and to have a fully designed project that's ready to go gives you a much better chance of getting it funded, so, so I think this, this serves us well going, going down both, both those paths, and, and next week, I'll be bringing you a, a design contract for this with McMahon and Associates.
Relative to the road, the roads that you're doing and all, and Andy Baggis's submission, Andy Baggis is leaving, right?
Right, but, but these are things that the department has had on its list for quite some time. You, you know, you and I have talked about Plymouth Street on a number of occasions, the, these are longstanding road projects that, that need to be done, and certainly, the new director will come in with substantial resources to deploy as well, you know, it's not like we're using up all the money and he's going to, you know, be, you know, stuck for a year, he'll, he'll have plenty of resources to work with when he comes in.
Now, are we stamping this in stone?
No, no, this is, you know, we've submitted the applications for this, I just wanted you to be aware of what was on the list. We also have in the packet the appointment of the, our new refuse collector, Richard Barasso, resident of Middleboro. A couple of things that aren't in, in the paperwork, just wanted to touch on, and I gave out a copy of a draft letter to Mass DOT, we had talked last week about the concern about the railroad, and so I drafted this, which, you know, tries to, you know, lay out the rationale that, you know, as far as I know, any new rail use comes with, you know, safety upgrades, you know, intersection upgrades, grade crossing upgrades, and, and fencing, and neither of those are being, you know, proposed with the expansion of the rail service to Cape Cod, so I think we, you know, we, we spelled that out in the letter, I'm, I'm coming to the conclusion that that, the letter goes to the governor, the secretary of transportation, MBTA, and Mass Coastal, I, I think, you know, to, to send it to any one of those, it may not be exactly the right place it should go, I think they should all be aware of the concern.
Send it to our reps to-
Reps. Reps too, uh, and you also wanted it to go to the town south of here. And I talked to Rich Kamera today in, in Rochester, and we've sent a couple of emails to the people we've been communicating with on this, you know, saying these same things. And he, and they are, you know, in agreement with our approach and.
Wareham too.
We're gonna try and enlist Wareham. Wareham may not have the same issue as we do because the speeds may lower there. They, they may have to lower the speeds there because the, the track is just not, and, and the, the alignment doesn't support higher speeds. But certainly Rochester and Middleboro have common interests here, and, and we'll see if there is common interest in Wareham.
And I think Bridgewater would have the same concerns as well, if it's the same track that I'm thinking.
Yeah, but I think above here, it's, they've already got, made the safety improvements due to, to the commuter rail. So I, I think north of here, it's okay. It's just south of here that it's different.
So they're using the commuter rail most till, till the freight yards?
Yeah.
And then they're gonna transfer all the?
Yeah, they're gonna, yeah.
Is that where they cut over down?
I believe so, yeah.
They have to cut over after the Lakeville station. Unless they back up.
Yeah, I, 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 I don't know, you know, how, I, you know, I'm pretty sure they're using the existing commuter, you know, line coming to here, and then there, you know, there is no commuter line south of here.
Yeah, I think there was a trail, a rail line behind the community stations. I'm not, I'm not positive how it works.
Because there's no fish in it, right?
No, it would've been nice if they actually talked to us before they did this.
Yeah, it'd be nice if they, you know, did a little bit more planning and gave us more notice, but they didn't. So, um, next week, we, we do have, uh, at least one person coming to talk about safety around the rail and around the grade crossing, just to get the word out to the public to be careful, that this is a, you know, a very different animal, having six mile an hour train coming through town. Completely different. So, um, you know, they, they will be here next week. That'll be, uh, one of the presentations.
Just be a Mass DOT.
Yeah, this will be, they have a Operation Lifesaver program that specifically focuses on safety. I'm gonna try and get somebody else from Mass DOT to talk about the larger issue. I don't know if I'll be able to, you know, do that as well, but I'll try.
Okay.
The other item, uh, speaking of Mass DOT, uh, Alan, myself, Ruth Joffrey, and Gary McNaulson from McManon Associates, uh, met with Secretary Davy last week, uh, at the State House with our representatives, Representative Coulter, Oral, and Gifford were there to talk about the rotary and, and talk about our design preference for the McMahon approach. You know, it was interesting, this interesting discussion, nothing was decided, uh, other than a new variant of the Mass DOT, uh, proposal came out. Sitting there at the meeting, the, uh, highway engineer thought of another way of, of doing it, and they're gonna evaluate that. But, uh, the follow-up will be another meeting after that's been looked at and further discussion. And, uh, uh, they were interested in local support, uh, and, you know, as you know, Mr. Farley went to Lakeville, and they, they're supporting the McMahon Alternative. Uh, I think we'll, it'll be beneficial for us to have other municipalities endorse it. Some of our businesses in the industrial park endorse it. Uh, and I did talk to, um, Jim Hatfield at Serpitt about, um, the, JTPG has always been interested in committing up to a year's worth of tip funding to solve the rotary issue. I said it would be very helpful if that money could back the McMahon Alternative as well, um, in terms of, you know, convincing the secretary, uh, to, to do it that way. And I believe we're gonna be able to get that done at the next JTPG meeting. So, um, we're, we're trying to do everything we can to, to do this, you know, what we, we feel is the, the correct way. And we'll keep working on that.
Questions of the town manager?
Uh, two more things. Um, we talked about Thomas Park last week? Sorry?
Just to interrupt, I'm sorry. Um, like Charlie said, I was at the meeting, as was, uh, Ms. Knowlton, with Representative Oral's office. And, um, they didn't say, they didn't say yes, but they didn't say no. There was a meeting, Mr. Rule, and I went to a few years ago, where they basically said no. I thought it was a positive meeting, all in all, they were, it was definitely interesting. The secretary seems to be interested in, uh, community support, community development, economic development. I think it would certainly be in our best interest as a board to reach out to other communities such as Bridgewater and Thornton, even Plimpton and Cava, and maybe even Plymouth. I mean, the bulk of the traffic isn't from Middleboro, but they all swear about it when they get here, you know? So I think if we can garner some more local support, and local support from our, you know, our local representatives in other areas, I mean, we're lucky at this point to have three state representatives. But there are a lot of other communities that can be, that are affected by this rotary that have, you know, state reps and state senators as well. I'll be reaching out to the state senator from Lakeville as well to see if we can garner his support as well. But it's, this is gonna be, this is a community problem. It needs to be a community effort, not a Middleboro community, a, a much larger southeastern Mass community. And I think it, it really behooves us all to, uh, to reach out to everybody we know in surrounding communities and ask for their support.
I agree, absolutely. Thomas Park, we talked a little bit about that, the, the ownership issue. I, I chased that down, uh, talked to, to council, and, uh, apparently, what would have to happen is the, the G and E would have to decide that they no longer had a use for that part of the land that's under their control. Basically, you know, the, the land that they have their lining plan on also includes Thomas Park, you know, historically, it's always been one parcel. But if they've decided that they no longer have an interest in, in keeping control of the park, they can take a vote, uh, declare it, um, surplus, I guess, for their own use. And then it has to go to town meeting for town meeting to endorse a change of use, or a change of control, basically, change of control. And, you know, at that time, uh, you know, if, if they just give it up, it would come under the selectmen. If the idea is to transfer it somewhere else and give it to somebody else's control, that, that too could be done at that same town meeting. So I talked to, um, Jackie Crowley today about it. I, I briefed her on what needs to be done. Uh, she's gonna be talking to the, the G and E Commission about it, I guess, at their next meeting to, to get that process started. So it's basically a, you know, it's, it's a town meeting vote that, uh, changes control of a parcel, or part of a parcel.
Beautiful, the park does look great though.
It does look great, and, you know, it's, it's up to you about what you want to do. I mean, I, I think we've got the, you know, the maintenance, you know, under control at this point, you know, so whether or not you, you have to give it to anybody else, you know, I, I'm not sure you necessarily do, as long as we, you know, can keep, you know, uh, care of it, and, and we've got the help of Mr. Aruda, and, you know, uh, you know, we have the, a couple of DPW crews in there just doing, you know, general cleanup, you know, after the storm, you know? And I think we've, we've gotten on top of it finally. And then finally, I, you know, something I, I haven't announced yet, but, um, uh, we, we have completed interviews, and I've, uh, selected a, a new DPW director, and that would be Chris Peck, uh, who has been the superintendent of streets at Lakeville for the last six years. He has an engineering degree and, and, and comes with, uh, great recommendations, uh, from Lakeville, and, uh, I think he'll be, he'll, he'll fit very well into our organization, and, uh, um, you know, he'll be starting in early June.
And is Andy leaving?
Andy, you got Friday.
Friday?
He did.
Who's running, uh, who's running the show?
You know, Dave, Dave Blanton, you know, has taken over as he's done in the past, uh, you know, in the interim. And Dave's a great, you know, a, a great general foreman, and, and he's, you know, very capable of, of running the show in the interim.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Very good. This time, we'll go into correspondence. And I will start with, uh, Mr. Quell.
I was reading over this, uh, correspondence that relates to Enhance 911, Reedy Path. And it just brought me to, back to the last time we had voted to, uh, basically just rename the entrance to the high school. And just, I was over there holding signs during the election. Are we gonna put something out there? Have I missed something?
I think that's now a, um, I, I think that was gonna go before the, um, the School Committee as well, because of the, again, that, that's under their care, custody, and control. Maybe the School Committee member in the audience can tell us if there's been any change to the name of the entrance driveway at the high school?
I haven't seen anything yet.
Okay.
But if it's approved, then it would just be a, it'd just, the DPW would come out. I mean, it's a small funding issue, I know. It's, they would be the ones, we, that would do it, and put something up if they decided they wanted to.
Yeah, that's what, you know, people deciding if they want to do, sure.
Let me go back to the main page. And that is, oh, the ribbing cutting event. Unfortunately, I'll be working, but it'd be nice if somebody was there, but I'm just gonna let the board know I'm not able to attend that, unfortunately, but.
I plan on attending.
Good, okay, that's, that's one, so. Okay, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to acknowledge that a correspondence was dropped off here tonight that we should pass out probably.
Well, we'll put it in next week's packet.
Okay.
If somebody, anybody brings in anything, we'll put it in the packet so that everybody gets it next week.
Okay.
All right?
Um, I think it might be, I would request that it be put on the agenda. I think it has to do with something we've been discussing from Edgeway.
Sure.
Okay.
It'll be on the agenda for next week. All right. Mr. Knowlton, did you have anything that struck your fancy?
No, I am all set.
Okay. Mr. Farley?
Um, I didn't realize I was gonna be a, a Serpitt guy, but, um, you wanna go to that thing on the 22nd?
No, I have a root canal that night.
That's great, keep your quiet. You're going.
That's just a dinner thing, it's.
I think it'd be good for somebody to go, but I, um, I can't, I have an appointment with a three-year-old in a baton twirling competition. I'll trade you a root canal.
All right, maybe, uh, well, we'll see, we'll see. I might rather go to the root canal myself.
Um, yeah, that's it for me.
Okay.
I've read it over, I'm, I'm good.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Um, the fire chief, now item number four. Working, uh, Charlie, were you working with all the town department heads that are involved with, uh, any of the storm-related damage?
Yes, he's, he's done everything necessary up till now, and will continue to follow through to the end to get as much reimbursement as we can. You know, I've been very successful today, and I'm sure you'll continue to be. He tells, he tells me today, in fact, that, um, the state is appealing, I don't know, somebody's appealing the fact that, for some reason, Plymouth County isn't eligible for the snow removal portion of the reimbursements. Something about, at first, the word was that we were six inches shy of what needed to be, you know, have fallen to, to be eligible, and then we heard it was a, a half an inch, and so I guess there is some attempt to appeal, because we, we seem to be the only ones left out in the, in the designation, so, um, so I'll let you know if that changes.
You didn't have enough snow? And the blizzard that was blowing.
Maybe somebody has a short ruler or something, I don't know.
Maybe they missed something I didn't.
Yeah.
Seemed like I had.
It just seemed odd that we would be the only ones not, not eligible.
Is snow the only?
That's the only category where we didn't, uh, yeah, the snow removal costs.
Okay.
Are the only area that we're not eligible. All the other damage, you know, we're, we are eligible. So that, that's the bulk of it.
The, um, I would like to bring up the item number seven, the, uh, finance reports from the, from, from Verizon. They're very informative. They don't list a thing. So I don't know why they sent us a form that's, that's blank. I would think they would like to fill it out a little bit, put some numbers in there anyway, but, uh, that said, Form 200, CCTV Form 200, completely blank. All right, it's our government working for us. So.
The numbers they followed up with?
Verizon's a private enterprise, right?
Today.
They didn't fill out the form, but there were numbers that followed it, they don't.
Yeah, they didn't fill out Form 200, but they did fill out Form 400, and I don't understand the, um, why.
Seems like they would fill out the other form too, but that's just me. Okay, anybody else have anything to bring up on the correspondents? We have no executive session meeting tonight, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, me on that, guys.
Have a motion in a second? See? Come on, fast. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned, thank you all.